If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The first item on the agenda is exemplary people, and the board would like to recognize Danielle Harley. Is that how you're going to say it?
Holly, yep.
Okay. Carrie Neaton and Nicole Schwartz for their dedication to our Unified Sports Program. Our program was selected by Special Olympics from hundreds of schools nationwide that applied as a unified champion school. With this award, a unified champion school banner, a frame certificate was received, and this honor was highlighted on the CIAC United Sports website. Did anybody want to say anything further on that? I don't think they're here, correct?
They're not here, but I hope we had asked them to join us. Hopefully, they're watching livestream right now, and we just want to thank them for their dedication to all of our students. Our Unified Sports Program started, Jen, do you remember what year it was that we started? I know I was the principal and you were the instructional leader in special ed at the time.
2013?
2013, 2014, somewhere around there, and it has been culturally one of the most positive things that happened to this district, and it's since moved on to the middle school as well. Just absolutely tremendous program, and we thank Danielle and Nicole and Carrie, John DiGennaro, and all the student athletes and peers that participate in it. It's a really nice honor.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's wonderful.
It's a program that Jen started that has continued to grow.
Okay, hold on one quick second. George, he said Joe's email does not have the Zoom link in it.
Oh, well, that...
Sorry, that was just George saying he can't get in because it didn't have the Zoom link. All right, so we'll go on as Joe tries to get George.
He found the announcement that Terry sent out. He has that email.
No, he was looking for...
No, he was doing a second one, a different one. David, he copied you on it. Do you think you could just respond to him and let him know that Joe is getting that? Thank you to him. And I'm assuming that's why Shannon, I'm sure she's going to be the next one texting.
Yeah, I think I replied to them, and I didn't copy and paste the...
If you can just let him know and Shannon too that Joe is sending the link to them so that they can get in. We will move on. So we have the next up is acknowledgement of donations. Item one is the board would like to acknowledge an appreciation to Monroe Rotary Club for their donation of dictionaries, which my child was a recipient of that, for each of the district's third grade students. And that is a great thing that they do every year for our students. That is a huge undertaking, and every year, because I don't even know when they started that, because my oldest, who's in college, got one too when she was in third grade, so.
Yeah, I definitely want to thank the Rotary Club for this donation. I was with Phil Lindstrom when he went around to the three elementary schools to do it. Normally, what happens every year is Dave Wolf, longtime Monroe resident and Rotarian, also goes with them to the schools, and he does a little overview on how to use the dictionaries with the third graders. Unfortunately, with COVID, he couldn't do that, but he did create a video to be shared out, so all of the elementary school, all the third grade teachers shared that video with their kids. So we definitely thank the Rotary Club.
Yes, and we did get the video too. Item two is the board would like to acknowledge an appreciation, a $2,000 donation from iEngineering to be used for academic purposes. So is this for any of the schools or...?
I think this was primarily for math and science.
I'm talking to Sheila, and we're going to do some stuff in social studies at the high school.
Oh, nice. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes, yeah, that's right. I did talk to Sheila about that, and she did indicate that it was going to go towards trying to purchase some materials for the new diverse courses book. Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions with those before we move on? All right, great.
Thank you all those groups.
Yes, that's amazing. We can always use donations of everything. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Thank you, Nick. Second, Jerry. Joe, did you want to talk about, and I'll give you a second? Are you still trying to text?
I'm trying, yeah. But I definitely want to...
Joe, do you want to finish giving them the Zoom link?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to pull up.
We're just going to take a 30-second break so that Joe can send George and Shannon the Zoom link, and Christine just texted that she's on her way.
All right, they should have, they should now have the link.
Okay, perfect.
I definitely want to make a few comments on the consent agenda in terms of retirements. We have two retirements that were just set our way. One is for Jan Bernie, who was a Jacque Hollow Library Media Specialist. Jan's been with us. This will be her 20th year. She started with us in 2001, has spent her entire career over at Jacque Hollow in the library there, so we wish her the best of luck. And then our second one is Marie Blake. Marie is an English teacher at Massey, but she's been a longtime teacher in Monroe. This is, I believe, her 36th year. Started when Chalk Hill was a 6-8 school in 1985. Went to Jacque Hollow when that school opened up and transferred to Massey in 2006. Marie's worn a number of hats besides the current union president, a number of different hats throughout her years. I found out that, I did not know this about Marie, but she was actually the cheerleading advisor at Chalk Hill at one point, grade six student council advisor at Chalk Hill. Personnel files hold a lot of secrets. Marie was the longtime yearbook advisor at both Jacque Hollow and Massey, always put out a great product, class advisor at Massey, and like I said, MBA, union president. So after 36 years, congratulations to Marie on a well-deserved retirement coming up.
And then we have one appointment. Did you want to discuss that appointment?
Yeah, we're really very happy to find a special education teacher in Jessica Mulaney for the position that was recently opened up with the retirement of Rebecca Rosen at Fawn Hollow. So Jessica will be joining us over at Fawn Hollow with Lee, Antis, and team.
Great, thank you. Do I have any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Well, we're sorry to have you go, Marie, but you know, I guess 36 years is well-earned, and... I'm sure. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and first up is our Massey Board Representatives, and they were calling in tonight, so I think you'll probably have to unmute them. Paul, please.
All participants are unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Hold on one second. Let me just turn you ladies up for a second.
All right.
And you're good.
All right, so unfortunately, Melanie and Sujia had some issues logging in for tonight. So good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. This is a little different for me. And I'll start tonight by saying I hope everyone had a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And then I'll start with my opinion on distance learning. I think it's going pretty well. I do miss in-person classes, but distance learning's working out for me. The schedule is structured pretty well, and teachers have been pretty understanding and helpful when it comes to work and Zoom. And then I'll also talk about Massey Robotics. We're continuing to do our club virtually while we're full distance, and we're trying to proceed as cautiously and safe with the rest of our season. And then also, so the Massey community will also be doing a mass singer competition. So basically, students will be matched and send videos of them singing, and the Massey community will guess who's behind the mass based on clues and their voice, and then a panel of our celebrity faculty judges will determine the winners. And also, the Massey Peer Leadership Team hosted a Massey trivia contest last Friday. It had a great turnout, 40 students and 10 teachers came. And quarter one honor roll was released this week, and Friday marks the midway point of our second quarter, which is really exciting. And then I just want to congratulate all of our new inductees into the National Honor Society.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I guess. That was it.
Yep.
All participants are muted.
Thank you. Anybody else have any reports for this evening? Joe and I attended virtually on Zoom the Legislative Breakfast on this past Friday, and they did it a little differently. They put us in breakout rooms based on regions. So we were in the breakout room with Shelton, Trumbull, Bridgeport, and that was it. It was just us, right?
Trumbull, Bridgeport.
Oh, and Stratford.
Stratford.
And Stratford. So it was the superintendent, the board chairs, and then they brought us together with everybody in the whole group, and we had the representative from Stratford and the representative from Trumbull in our breakout room with us. The main discussion points of the Legislative Breakfast, well, they called it a breakfast, but our legislative meeting obviously centered around money and what is going to be happening that the school districts, you know, are in desperate need of money because of all the expenses that we are incurring with COVID. They did discuss the vaccine. Right now, the staff is on what they call 1B, and they asked, you know, they said if you can move them to the top of 1B. You know, everybody's feeling was that would be very important, that our staff be moved to the top. But again, most of the discussion had to center around money, and that all the districts are in the same position of us with regard to staffing, not having subs, money going out the door, and these different issues, and that, you know, that everybody is feeling the pain and really needs help from the state and guidance from the state. Did I miss anything, Joe? That was pretty much...
That was it, yep.
That was pretty much...
Yeah, they broke us up into four groups, like Donna said, by region, so, you know, it seemed like when we got back together, those are pretty unifying themes that were talked about across the whole Southern Fairfield County.
Right, definitely. And definitely, social, emotional well-being of our students and our staff was discussed. There was a big discussion about that, I guess the state got more, you know, God has money being withheld from the first round of the CARES Act, and how much and when are they going to release the next wave of that? But they did not know. They did mention, which I found very interesting, they did mention the fact that the state does not have any intention of making vaccines mandatory to students. They did, the legislators talked about that. I don't know if that is something that'll change, but that is what they have indicated. And that was pretty much it?
Yep.
Anybody else before we move on there? All right, we are at public participation, so Paul, if you can unmute, I will start here.
Q and A session has started.
I will start here if anybody has public participation. All right, I will move on to the phone.
Q and A session is over.
Is there nobody on? All right, thank you, Paul. All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
So Paul, nobody's on right now either? Okay, because Alan Dean was supposed to be on. I'll just give a really short, brief... I know we've talked about, you know, our situation right now with our food services. I talked to Alan today, who was supposed to be on, to address some of the issues with the current deficit. He sent me an update. Ron and I have been looking at this. We are, I talked to Donna earlier today, want to schedule a meeting to sit down with Alan and look at some mitigation strategies that we can use to address this deficit. As of right now, the year-to-date deficit in the program is $146,000. Included in that deficit are COVID-related expenses of about $14,000, which Alan believed could be addressed through CARES funding by the end of the month. We'd have to look at where we've already allocated money and see if we could pick some of that off, if possible. Additionally, Alan has gotten Sodexo to release back another $28,000 in fees, and he's going to have an amended draft for signatures to put the deficit right now at about $104,000. He's hoping to save us about $100,000 in fees for the years, and that's kind of where we stand right now. We've been talking with them on different mitigation strategies. Obviously, you know, the biggest hurdle we're facing right now is participation in the lunches. I do know that they are at a pretty bare-bones spot in terms of what they're operating right now. Right now, any student in the district can get lunch for free if they get it from Fawn Hollow, which, you know, is subsidized by the USDA. But I know, I'm pretty certain there are only two people working at Fawn Hollow right now preparing those lunches. So I do know they've had, I think some pretty significant layoffs to their staff to, again, to try to help mitigate this deficit to some point. So I'm hoping to set up a meeting with Alan, Ron, Donna, maybe someone else, if someone else wants to join, to talk about some strategies that we can use as we continue to address this deficit. Still not on, Paul? Okay. All right, go ahead, Dave.
Sorry, before we move on, a couple of points on that. I'm glad you mentioned the numbers, because I was going to, that's obviously the elephant in the room, are the numbers. The other thing is, obviously, we all understand the driver is when schools are closed, people aren't buying lunches. That's obvious. The other thing is that I've been getting some feedback firsthand from students and staff about the quality of hot lunches. So like I said, I understand if school is closed or only half of the kids are in, we're going to have a reduction in hot lunch purchases. But I don't want to see the district being liable for money if people aren't buying lunches because the quality is poor. So how do we find out? Do we look back a year or two and see if there's a drop-off in purchases of hot lunches when we were fully in? Is there an informal way to, you know, survey faculty and kids in school without causing too much more work, but to try to find what that driver is and something like that? Because like I said, I don't want to be responsible if there's a quality issue.
Okay. I think we could definitely do a survey. I think we can definitely get some kind of a survey. I think we can look back too and get an idea of...
There must be a chart of purchases, right, over the last two, three years, and then if there's a decline or not, yeah.
I think so. Right, Ron? Yeah.
Sodexo would have those numbers too, right?
Yes, yep.
Of hot lunch purchases, yeah.
So you'd survey the kids?
Kids and staff, yeah. I've had staff tell me that hot lunches, you know, are horrible, are horrible.
I've heard that a few years ago, but, you know, it'd be interesting, this survey, you know, everyone would say.
Yeah. I think it's different here at Massey. I've heard good things about the food here at Massey, but I think in the other schools, we should look at it. That's all.
Yeah, I don't have a good frame of reference, because I don't, I've never gotten lunch when I left here, but when I was here, yeah, the food was Boar's Head, lunch meats, it's good.
Yeah, no, I've heard the same thing. I've heard here is very good, but I just would like to rule that out. If we're going to have a liability at the end of the year, I'd like to just rule out if there's a quality issue, and that's why they're not being made. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Nick.
I just want to make a quick comment about the budget that was brought up, and this kind of piggybacks off of what you were talking about at your Legislative Breakfast too. You know, we, again, we are at a structural disadvantage in Monroe because of our timelines with our budget, because it's so early that things happen in February, March that actually do affect our budget, but it's already gone from us. So, you know, the governor comes out, is coming out with his budget February 5th or 6th, and then in Washington, they're debating, negotiating, doing whatever they do about possible aids to towns and cities. So based on what comes out in the next 30 to 60 days from both levels of government, there might be an opportunity to pick up something directly to us from those two sources. But again, it'll probably be off, this will be off our plate by the time those things happen, so it's going to be another year of catch-up in March based on what comes down, but especially this year, because so many things at the different levels are happening.
Anybody have anything else on that? All right, you can go, continue on.
We have special education updates. I know you don't have very much, because a lot of it will be covered in the presentation, but...
On the agenda is the financials first, right? The financial update. So if you just look at what's in your packet for the financials, we're exactly where we were last month. So because we encumbered all of that money, and we have that hold fund in those accounts, we are exactly where we were last month, which is unusual for us, but we'll take it. And then as far as the enrollment is concerned, we had one new student register in November. Two students were withdrawn, dismissed, or moved. I believe they were both, one was withdrawn, one was dismissed. Students that were, I'm sorry, students that were referred ineligible were four, and we do have an additional high-class student.
Which is already in that financial?
Correct. It's already been encumbered.
Does anybody have questions for Danielle? Yes, Nick.
Are you getting any feedback from parents on the level of support that's being given during remote? And how is it all working out? I mean, I know we did it in March and April, but, you know, we had talked at board meetings about not just special ed, but the whole education system just flipped overnight. But now that we're into this remote period here in Monroe until December 11th, what is the feedback about SPADA in the district?
Well, we are utilizing all of our program managers, all of our paraprofessionals, and anyone else, you know, permanent subs, things like that, to make connections with students for support throughout the day. So I think we have a pretty good handle. We've learned a lot from March to June, although, you know, our special education staff did a fantastic job of keeping kids on top of their work, and also students who were falling behind in the ability to graduate by June, you know, they were able to work with those students, and those students were able to graduate in June. So again, we have, you know, we're utilizing all the resources that we have for students who are in remote. We also brought in, certain groups of students are coming into school live with teachers and paraprofessionals, so, you know, students who did not do well remotely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, I just saw your message. Do you want to put him on for a second? Alan, are you on now? He's saying he's there, but, there he is. Alan, are you there?
I'm here.
Hey, Alan. Hey, listen, sorry, I know it sounded like you were having a little problem with the link. Just really quickly, I just went over some of the financial information that you shared with me earlier about the current deficit and the possibility for some ability to apply some of the CARES money towards that, as well as the $28,000 in fees. And I also discussed, you know, us having a meeting in the near future to, you know, to try to address some of these other things. Did you want to add to that at all, Alan?
No, I think the important thing is, you know, Joe, you talked about the meeting, is, you know, my job, I guess I'll say it this way, my job is, quite honestly, to protect the interests of this board and to protect the interests of the Monroe taxpayers. And we are in a challenging year, as everybody knows. So really, there's two ways that we're doing it. One's on the ground with mitigating daily expenses. As best we can, Horacio and I are doing everything in our power to mitigate financial exposure on the ground. Our food cost is running only 20% of what we were spending last year at this time. I only have Horacio and one manager, or I'm sorry, one hourly employee currently on the payroll. Everybody else is laid off. So from that perspective, we are shrinking what we call the middle of the page to, really, to bare bones. And the other piece is, on my plate is to mitigate contractual expenses and some of the exposure that's there in terms of the fee structure. And that's the piece that I want to speak to offline with the board, to the strategies specifically to Monroe, to really, I've gotten the organization to approve a lot of gray area in the contract and to make sure that we are doing all the right things a good partner does and taking a lot of those costs out of the contract on the fee side. And we can talk about that more specifically in our meeting. But we're going to do everything in our power to bring the financial exposure to the least possible, not that we can, given the world that we're in. Nobody asked for this, but we're all in it together, and we're all figuring it out as we go. And we certainly don't know what the rest of the year will bring, but we will do everything, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that I am liaison, that works with the organization to get things approved, to make sure that your costs are as little as possible, so that we can all get this together in one piece.
Okay. Alan, one of the things that we talked about a little bit was, you know, I know when I was at the high school, and the high school's always a little bit different, you know, it's a little bit different animal with the, you know, being off the National School Lunch Program, but I know we used to have a, you know, Horacio always did a nice job of having a, I don't know what we would call them, but students that he would pull together to survey to find out, you know, what kind of the, you know, what were some of the key meals that the kids really enjoyed, even the key à la carte items and all that stuff. Is there any similar type of survey or anything to see if, you know, what we're serving the kids is meeting their needs and wishes and whatnot, and is there any way to do that at the younger grades?
Yeah, I know he did that just before we went out full distance learning, and I haven't spoken to him with the results, but he got together student board directors, about a half dozen kids at the high school that kind of been on the areas on over the last couple of years, to identify, to make sure that we're serving the things, because we can't serve everything because of distance learning or social distancing, to make sure the things that we have there, everything that is their favorites. The challenge here at the high school is really, it's their, it's really their inability to move, because of what's happening. And that's just really lending towards less traffic at the cap. And so a lot of those add-on sales that we would typically see in a normal year just aren't there, because kids just don't have the ability to move around the school at these be able to do. And the challenges we have at Jacque Hollow is we do some of our feeding in the library, and that's limiting participation and limiting snack sales. And even though the elementary schools were gaining a good deal of traction while they were back in school, especially in the couple weeks leading up to the middle of the month, this November, the participation is still less, and we have no snack sales. So, you know, our sales are running about 35% of where they were last year at this time, and we're dealing with, over the aggregate from September through November, our available meals to sell in terms of kids and operating days in schools is just under half of a normal year. So that's our starting point, is half of the normal business. And then from there, we've had some of these other challenges. You know, the thing that Horacio continues to work on is the MyDetex, the Optin texting program, to get notification out to kids at the high school level and also to parents, so they know what's going on in terms of, you know, when school is in session, especially on the... so they know what's going on in terms of, you know, when school is in session, the specials and things that are happening in the school. The surveys that he can do through that platform, and then also to do any announcements for distance learning. Distance learning is really, I think, quite honestly, if you look at the rest of this year, my guess is for the next three months, schools, Monroe, and other schools will be in and out, depending on where, you know, where the, where the COVID level is. And, and so, that's where the opportunity is to, is to garner more meal counts, is at that, those distance learners. Because, you know, it's free, and we really need to be able to drive that into the community that, to come on down and to take advantage of those meals, because this is something that you don't see. It's early in a community like Monroe, you don't have very few opportunities to have free meals for everybody. And we have that this year, and if we can get more people to take advantage of that, it's going to greatly help mitigate some of this financial exposure.
And, and the question I was asking Alan was, I know, I know we do that at the high school. Is there any way to do that, you know, some of that surveying at the, at the younger grades? Has that ever been done?
It's been done. So we used to do what's called a youth advisory committee at the elementary schools. We do with the kids. We also did monkey surveys with parents. We did the same thing at the middle school. Right now, surveys internally are challenging to, to get, but we definitely put together Google surveys and get those out to parents. So when school does get back in session, we can really start to understand, you know, what they're looking for, why the kids are in school and for distance learning, what will it take to entice them to come down and participate in that program? Do we need to add more convenience points, more, more points of pickup different times during the day? Because really, parents can come down and pick up meals for the entire week if they wanted to. And those opportunities are out there. We just have to make sure that, that message is getting into the community.
Thanks, Alan.
Does anybody have any questions for Alan?
Joe talked about the numbers. That was my, that was my question, was what, what the numbers were. And then just, again, to rule out if there was a quality issue. So, he addressed them. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I'll talk to you this week. We'll set something up. I think we need to set it up sooner rather than later, so.
Yeah, I'm available whenever everybody else is.
Okay. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Take care. The last piece I have is just really quickly, I, I had spoken at, I don't know if it was the previous meeting or at a previous meeting, about the state flexibility for snow days. I did work with all of the, all of the different teachers' union, actually talked to the, I'm sorry, all of the different bargain units, including the teachers' union. Also did speak to a number of parents through Parents Council. We will be sending out some information on flexibility that we'll be providing the district in terms of snow days. But as, as you, as you recall, the state said that you could now substitute a distance learning day for a snow day. And one of the things that has kind of come across universally, I was, I was kind of surprised at first, but I guess I should have looked at it a little bit more globally from a K-12 perspective. I think from the secondary perspective, it's a pretty easy transition to go to a, to a remote learning day. At the elementary level, it's a little bit different, especially at the primary grades, you know, K-1, 2. You know, it takes, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of front-loading work, and it's a very quick turnaround to try to get it done. So, we've reached kind of a, and a, I think is a pretty good consensus on, on moving forward with this, which, which still gives us some opportunity to control the end of the year and when we get out, but also, you know, honoring the challenges that, you know, a very fast, sudden snow day would pose on, would pose on teachers and, and parents and students and whatnot. So what we talked about is having, for our first three snow days of the year, have actual snow days. And I think there's something to be said for, you know, this is obviously if we are in-person learning. If we're on remote learning, it doesn't matter. We're, you know, if it's, if it's snowing on a remote day, we're going to have remote instruction. But if we are engaged in in-person learning and we have a snow day for the first three, for the first three days, we will honor the traditional snow day. And I, I think there's something to be said for our kids untethering from their, from their technology for a little bit and having a couple of days of, you know, that magic of a snow day, where you, you know, get to go out, wake up, go outside and, you know, make a snowman or what have you. So, and then after that, after that third day, try to implement the flexibilities that the state has given us and allow for, allow for remote instruction on those days. There's, there's going to have to be a lot of communication about this, you know, especially from our office, a lot of communicating about, you know, as we see weather coming and, you know, over the course of a week, letting parents know, hey, it might be a good idea to have your child bring their, you know, their Chromebooks home so they're prepared if we do have a, you know, if we do have a snow day. There's some other criteria. The schools will go over the, the schedules and whatnot. But I just wanted to give a quick update here. That three days, right now, we, you know, the last day of school is scheduled for Monday, June 7th. So kind of the thought behind the three days was the three days gets us to Thursday, the 10th, leaving us one more day of wiggle room in case something happens. Because obviously, you know, having a remote instruction day in lieu of, you know, a weather-related event is great, provided students have technology. So if, you know, in the event that we get, you know, one of those late, late year, early spring tornadoes like we had a couple of years ago, we can still have, we wouldn't, you know, we'd have to probably still have another, you know, quote-unquote, "snow" day. But that gives us, you know, a little bit of flexibility there. But after three days, the idea is to move towards the flexibility that the state's giving us, to hopefully get us in a position where, you know, we can, you know, have a pretty good idea that we'd be out by the, that second week of June, June, with June 11th being hopefully, you know, the drop-dead date, barring any unforeseen, you know, crazy weather situations, which in this area, you know, you never know. So I just wanted to give folks a heads up. We'll be sending out, we'll be sending out some communication to parents to explain that. Again, that's only on the days for, that we're going to have in-person learning.
Anybody have questions for Joe on that?
Nick. Just a quick comment. I think I said this at the last meeting when we were talking about this before the plan was officially formulated, was just the timing of the call for the teachers. Because, you know, if you, as a teacher, if you, you know, wake up and think you're going to go teach in person and then you get the call at 5:00 and you got to switch it, so I don't know how that is overcome. Because then if you make a call at 9:00 the night before and there's no snow, you lost something. So, I think it's just going to be, the, the timing, I think is going to be.
I think it's a good point, Nick, and I, I think, I think to that point, I think it's something, it's got to be called the night before. I think to ask, you know, especially like I said, at the primary grades, for someone to turn, you know, wake up in the morning and turn around and have to, you know, they have their manipulator set up for the kids, they have their station set up for the kids, and now it's, all of a sudden, it's remote. It would be, it would be asking a lot. So the, the aspiration is to, to call it the night before.
Anybody have any other questions on that?
If I call it the night before, I will be doing the snow dance, for sure, to make sure we get snow.
All right. I guess we will move on to item nine, which is the presentation of the superintendent's budget.
All right. So, in your, in your budget books is the, the executive summary, which is what I'm going to share with you all here tonight. I do want to thank everybody that's helped put this together. You know, this starts as a project at each, in each individual department and in each individual building, with the principals talking to the department chairs, to the teachers, to their staff, to their athletic directors and whatnot. Then formulating their building budgets, bringing them up to central office. And I really want to thank, you know, I could be remiss if I didn't thank Jack, Edron, Sheila, and Darlene, and Jen, for all the work that's going on up at central office to help put this together today.
Hey, Joe, if you're going to stand here, I'm going to bring the mic to you.
Uh, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Nick. So I just want to start with our mission statement. You've seen it before, but this really needs to guide what we're doing. We want to, we want to create a learn, a student-centered environment. We talk about maximizing our students. We want, we want to maximize their intellectual, creative, social, emotional, and physical potential. And we want to create a budget that meets that mission. So, in, in creating that budget to meet that mission, we need to make sure we do these five things. We want to make sure that we have a budget that provides the resources that we need to, to meet those mandates, whether they're state mandates, federal mandates, what have you. We want to create a budget that addresses class size. I'm going to talk a lot about that tonight and just about enrollment in general and, and kind of where we find ourselves. We find ourselves in a very peculiar situation, but class size matters to us, and we are monitoring that and addressing that as best we can in this budget, but there's definitely some risks. We want a budget that provides for a, a rigorous and relevant curriculum, one that focuses on teaching and learning, in the professional development of all of our teachers to be able to, you know, enhance instruction and assessment for our, for our students. We want to create a budget that supports the technology infrastructure. We've, we've learned this more in the past eight or nine months than, you know, the last 20 years in education, how important technology and how reliant we are on technology now. We know that this world is changing. We want our students to be able, to be able to meet those needs of this changing digital world. And finally, we want to, we want to create a budget that enhances the programs that we have and keeping an eye on the programs that we have and how do we improve them? How do we change them when they need to be changed, looking at them in both a curricular fashion and an extracurricular fashion? I know every year we talk about, you know, the need to, you know, balance high-quality education and education that, that meets the, that, that provides our students with this, with the college and career-ready skills that they need while being fiscally responsible and, you know, pardon me, but, you know, my mother's going to kill me. She doesn't know that this is out there. It's the best picture I had of her. It wasn't a great picture. But I thought this one, this really kind of hit it on the head for me, you know, metaphorically speaking, who am I thinking of when I create this budget? I'm creating, I'm thinking of my daughter 15 years ago. I think, yep, 15 years ago.
Did you get that at first, suppose?
She doesn't know that either. I, I hope.
Surprised.
She'll be okay if she's watching it. I don't know if my mom would be as happy with that one. You know, who am I thinking of? I'm thinking of, you know, my daughter when she was starting kindergarten and what opportunities did I want to have for her in this, in this budget? And I think about my mother, who's been in her house for 50 years. She's on a fixed income, single, you know, you know, widowed. You know, those two people, you know, metaphorically come to my mind as we, as this budget was created. You know, as, as this process unfolded, I started thinking about all the things that, that we, we should take pride in with this, with our school district. And there's a lot of really great things that, that have happened, and we know them. We know, we know about the state and nationally recognized schools, you know. All of our elementary schools have been named the school, school of distinction at one point or another. Our high school was a blue ribbon school. We take great pride in the fact that, you know, the end result for our, for our students, you know, life after college. We, you know, we talk about making students college and career-ready, and we know that. We know that 90% of our kids go on to two- or four-year colleges after, after high school, some into some of the, you know, best universities this, this country has to offer. And they go on and do really successful things, and they become very productive members of society. And that's our ultimate goal. So we take a lot of pride in that. We also take a lot of pride in the, in the partnerships that we've fostered in the community. And I think, you know, the one that speaks the most of that is the work that has, has been done, was started last year and that is continuing now with the vision of the graduate, where we've started to identify those, you know, skill, knowledge skills and dispositions that we think are so important for our kids to have. And, you know, a lot of these are soft skills, and as we meander our way through this pandemic, we're finding that those skills are more important now than we probably even realized, you know, a year ago. Critical thinking, communication, collaboration, empathy, the social, emotional, you know, fortitude for kids. So we take a lot of pride in that. You know, I always, you know, I was always amazed every year at the philanthropic levels of work that our students did. And year in and year out, we produce kids that literally do tens of thousands of hours of community service. We just heard about our Unified Champion School, you know. What, what better testament is there to talk about an inclusive school system than one that embraces, you know, Unified Sports away. This district has done that. And, you know, the other one is, we have some awesome extracurricular programming, whether, you know, you're in athletics, whether you're in the fine arts, the performing arts, music, theater, band. There's some tremendous programs. Our robotics program is second, you know, second to none. Just, we have a lot to offer our kids, and, you know, we should take great pride in that. And the last thing, and it's really, you know, I, I bolded it, I put exclamation points on it, I underlined it. You know, we should take great pride in our, in our staff. Our staff has done a tremendous job, and I don't think, you know, if the last, like I said, the last eight or nine months has done nothing but highlight that. The way they prepared for in-person learning, the way they prepared, you know, they've gone from in-person learning to hybrid learning, back to in-person learning to remote learning and whatnot, you know, just on a dime to do that. And all the while, you know, really trying to keep our kids engaged and try to attend to their social, emotional well-being. And, you know, and it's really, it's all staff, okay? It's definitely our teachers, it's definitely our administrators, but it's also our paraeducators, it's our secretaries, it's our custodians who are, you know, making sure that we're safe every day, clean in this place. It's all staff, you know. We, we should take great pride. I think they take great pride in being in the Monroe Public Schools, and, you know, that says a lot. And I just look at some of the things that are even happening. I know at Jockey Hollow and at, at Massey, you know, some of the things that, you know, staff are trying to do to keep kids engaged. I know we had a, the peer leadership team had a, had a trivia contest the other day. I know we have a couple of different activities signed up for the rest of this week for, for Massey. I know they were talking about doing a game of horse, a virtual game of horse against, you know, Mr. Swenson and Ms. O'Doy, two basketball players. But, you know, again, it just speaks to our staff's commitment to address the social, emotional needs of our kids. With all that being said, here's, here's the big number. And, you know, I'm not, I don't think any of us are, or at least I'm not, you know, completely surprised by the increase. We knew that, you know, we went out and I, this district was one of the only districts that I know that, you know, the staff went out and did, you know, agreed to do furlough days and other concessions to help address the budget issues that we faced in 2021. Now, as great as that was for this year, and by doing that, we were able to, you know, reinstitute a number of teachers this year, or avoid reducing, you know, five, five teaching positions this year, we knew that we were going to have to come back and pay this back, that we were going to have to make up the furlough days and then go to the, you know, the next step of, on the wage scale. So, not totally surprised by this number. It is definitely higher than it ever has been, you know, than it's been in recent history, for sure. We have to look at the, the key drivers of this, and like I said, the big one is, is in salaries. If you look at our salary line, okay, we have a budget increase of $1.8 million. It's a $62 million budget, about 600, you know, so basically, six, every $620,000 represents a percent. So 3.2% of that 6.19% increase is in salaries. That represents 51% of the, of the budget increase this year. The next one, benefits, followed by special education costs, which special education, you know, you'll see Darlene's going to give her presentation a little bit later on. Their expenditures aren't, are up very much compared to years past. But one of the areas that they are getting hit, are getting hit, is the threshold for excess cost is getting higher, and we're going to see a reduction probably. We are, we are projecting a reduction in excess cost revenue for next year. And I think we're seeing that this year. And then another piece that, that made up, you know, another big driver here was the magnet school tuition and settlement that we're working on with, with the city bridge port. If you take all of those, if you take all of these things, all, all these four areas right here, that makes up 89% of the increase. And I think if I, if I remember correctly, this is like five point, I had the number in my head before, but I know there's, there's only 0.63% of the budget increase outside of this in all the other areas. So, 89% in these areas right here. We had to make a, a number of assumptions, and some of these assumptions are going to be risks later on. The first assumption we made in putting together this budget is that we are hoping, or we are assuming that we are going to find some stability in student enrollment after the current year increase. We have, you know, we saw a, a big spike. I think we've talked about it a lot in here, about the number of families that have moved. It seems a lot of people moving from, you know, from more urban areas. It seems a lot of people moving from, you know, from more urban areas into the suburbs, into towns like Monroe. This budget assumes that we're going to have a little bit of stability next year, okay? And we'll talk about that. This budget assumes that we're going to have some stability in special education costs. We worked with the Board of Finance this past year, the Board of Finance provided a backstop in terms of a special education reserve fund, and this budget assumes that we will continue that relationship with them next year. We continue to budget, and I think, you know, the fact that Darlene and Ron work together every week, and Darlene's here every month presenting her numbers, you know, we're obviously always keeping an eye on this, but it is, we do know that, you know, one or two students moving into a district can change it dramatically. And today's December 7th. You know, the budget is May whatever, that first week in May. We have a long way to go, so the kids that we're budgeting for now may look very different than the kids that are here in May, or in September. Another assumption we made, we, working with our insurance broker, Brown &amp; Brown, it looks like they've told us to budget for a 10% increase in health insurance. Each, in the state partnership plan, each county has a different factor added to it. The factor in Fairfield County is 3.5, so basically, they're estimating that the plan is going to go up about 6% to 6.5%, and if it goes up 6% to 6.5%, you have to add that Fairfield County factor on of 3.5, so you're looking at about 9.5% to 10% increase in health insurance. That's the assumption we're making right now, that's what was budgeted. Hopefully that changes. I think we did get a little relief in this area last year where we had budgeted probably a similar number, and we were able to save, I think, about $150,000 when it came in a little bit lower. I hope it does again this year, we'll see. I didn't know, I didn't have a good way to say this, but, you know, this next one really speaks to the fact that, you know, last year, and then as we prepared for this year, you know, we really hit, I was going to say Bill Gerasko's accounts, we really hit repairs and maintenance, and we're looking at trying to claw some of that back. This budget assumes that because, you know, ultimately, we know that, you know, it's a penny wise, pound foolish. If you don't make these, if you don't do some of this work now, it costs you significantly more down the road. Another assumption for this year is we really kind of threw out last year's actuals, and trying to come up with averages, you couldn't really do it. So, you know, last year was an anomaly. I think what's going to make this process very difficult next year is we're going to have two years of kind of anomalies. We're going to be throwing out the 19, 20 actuals, and then these 2021 actuals are going to be really difficult to capture as well. So, you know, a lot of, any of our spending trends we use from the previous three years. This is a big one. I pray that we will be living in a post-COVID world. This budget does not have a lot, it has a little bit of, I don't want to call it contingency, it's not contingency, but it does have some funds set aside for PPE and whatnot, but we are hoping that we are not living in a world where everybody's wearing a mask every day, we don't need gallons of hand sanitizer, that we are in a much different place come next September than we are right now. And then as we talked about with the Cafeteria Fund, this budget does not project any revenue shortfalls. We weren't projecting that this year either. So those are the assumptions that went into the budget process as you see it. This is the most important slide. I think if there's no other slide tonight, this is the most important slide. It was something that, you know, as we were putting this together, and Jack and Ron and I were sitting down this weekend looking at it, things started to jump out. It was very interesting. First of all, you know, this shows the last 10 years, including this year, of our budget increases. You guys are familiar with those numbers before, and I know you've seen them. They also correspond really nicely to the enrollment down below, and we know that we were experiencing, you know, decreasing enrollment during all these years. And I always say, you know, my predecessors, especially Jim Augustine and John Batista, they were able to, and conservatively so, did a nice job of reducing staff while we were, while the student population was reducing. So they did all that. And if you look at this top row, just so you have an idea, the 10-year average of those 10 years of budget increases was 1.3%. This year, we've got an anomaly, we've got a bigger number here, and I'm going to continue to justify why that is what it is, but even if you did an 11-year average with those numbers, you're at a 1.74% increase. I think that's important. That's one reason why this slide's important. The next one is, the next one is the enrollment. Like I said, you saw that, the enrollment, and then the staffing, okay? The staffing represents our certified staff, less administrators, okay? So these are all of our teachers, guidance counselors, psychologists, it just doesn't include principals, instructional leaders, central office staff, and that's been the case throughout all these years. What's interesting here, and what I've done is, I've captured the October 1 numbers for the last nine, for nine of those years, and then this number is actually the number as of one week ago from today, just where we are right now, at 3,215. When I, and if you look at our staffing, like I said earlier, you know, Jim and John did a great job of reducing staff as our population decreased, but we are in a spot now where our population is not decreasing anymore. In fact, it's increased, and it's increased, you know, we talked about that spike that we saw this year, and we're hoping that that ends, but what I find really interesting here though, is if you look at this 3,215, so that is as of one week ago today, that's what we have in our schools, we have a teaching population with 259.16. If you go back in time to 3,215, it takes you back between 1415 and 1516, when we had between 3,298 and 3,179, okay? That's where we'd be. If you look at how many staff we had to address the needs of our students in those years, we had 12 more staff in 1516 and 18 more staff in 1415, so between 12 and 18 more teachers for roughly that number of staff. So to say that we're, you know, to say that we're doing more with less, we're doing way more with less. That's why I think that is, that's just so important that we understand that. Good friend told me I might want to include this piece, and I think it is important because, and I think it's important that, you know, we talk in town a lot about when we lose something, you know, when do we, you know, we never get it back, and I think it's important to keep in the forefront the things that have, that have, that we lost coming into this year, that were removed from this current budget. And all I did here, I had the same slide up three times, and I'll explain why in a second. This is kind of all the people that we lost, certified staff up through here, you know, I won't go through all of them, you've seen them before, we talked about them in the spring. These are the, kind of the things that we lost as a result of the reductions in the previous budget, and there's a lot there. What we're trying to do this year is start to claw some of this stuff back, and we're trying to get some of these things back. Some of these things we don't think we need. We know that John DiGiannaro did a great job working with the, you know, John DiGiannaro did a great job working with the Booster Club, they bought the high jump mat last year. Paul Course did an awesome job working out, very smart lease with Canon, so, you know, we're not worried about replenishing the amount of toner we have. We're learning to live a little bit differently. But we do, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later about trying to get back some of these things, and I'll explain a little bit why these are so important. 1.0 special ed at Massey, a world language position, and here the reduction was at Massey, I'll talk in a little bit, it's not a reinstatement of 1.0 at Massey, but it's a combination between Massey and Jackie Hollow. The sixth grade teacher, I'll talk about that in a little bit. And the two other areas is, like I said, you know, penny wise, pound foolish, we need to start making sure we're funding maintenance and repair so we don't get hit with longer, you know, higher-cost items down the road, and the area that we gutted last, this current year is, it was, you know, professional development, primarily in the form of, you know, conferences, courses for staff to participate in, as well as our partnership with Teachers College. I'm not, we're not saying, we're asking to get all this stuff back, but we're starting to claw a little bit, little bits, a little bit back at a time. So that's this year, this is the same slide, just a third one over. What are some areas that we're going to be looking at down the road? Not necessarily this year, but boy, I hope it's next year, because we've always talked about, you know, I remember hearing Jim say it years ago, and when I was a high school principal, it kind of went in one ear and out the other, but it is so true. You know, to have lost the math and science coordinators puts us at a really, you know, a really significant disadvantage in the elementary schools, to have people dedicated to just that. The work that our secondary instructional leaders do at Jackie Hollow and Massey is awesome, and to have some kind of support at the elementary level is huge. You know, we lost some teacher interventionists in the form of reading specialists at the elementary schools. Remember, we saved two of them, we also took two and put them into classrooms to address class sizes. Stepney is the only school in the district that does not have a library or media spec, you know, a dedicated library or media specialist. We'd like to see that get back. And then I highlighted these two again because, again, we're not clawing it all back, we're not trying to claw it all back this year, we're trying to be deliberate in our approach, but we're trying to get some of this stuff back. This is a hard, this is a hard, hard couple slides to see, but this kind of tells a little bit of the cautionary tale of our enrollment, and, you know, I talk about the assumptions that we're making in terms of enrollment. First of all, when I asked Lisa Shishkin to give me, you know, as of one week ago today, where were we one year ago, one week ago today, and where are we one week ago today? And you'll see, what's happened is, last year at this time, now, this includes all of our students in our state reported outplace schools and our outplaced students, we're at 3,186 students. This year, okay, as of November 30th, we're at 3,245, so 59 students higher, so that's why I'm doing the math right in my head. What was really important now, and we looked at this once already, earlier in the year, is the, if you looked at each cohort, so the kids who were in kindergarten last year, and they're in first grade this year, first grade last year, second grade this year, second grade last year, third grade this year, you know, each cohort of kids, if you look at that, this is what's happened over the course of the year, okay? They've had an addition of, last year, this kindergarten group was 208, this year in first grade, they're 220. First grade, 215, second grade, this year, 237. The same kids, and if you see, it goes up in every single grade, now, 12, 22, 11, 6, 14, so on and so forth, the only grade that it drops is eighth to ninth grade, where it dropped five, which is almost unheard of. You know, when I was a high school principal, I think it was usually around 25. So to only lose five students between eighth and ninth grade, now that's where kids will often go to a Voag school, a tech school, a Fairchild Wheeler, so you get, you know, more opportunities to maybe lose a kid, you know? So really nervous of that trend. So what we've done this year, okay, this is the next slide, looks exactly the same, it's just the next slide. What we've done is we've taken, and this is one of the assumptions, and again, this is a risk, if we're going to stop seeing the surge that we're seeing, I certainly hope so. We took this group, so now this is our kids that are currently with us right now, as of 1130, 2020, and we just ordered them all one grade over to create this upper projection. The only other thing that's different, you'll notice all the totals don't match, because Jack worked with Teresa Coleman, and they sent out a survey asking folks, hey, if you're not in the Monroe Public Schools this year, and you're going to be in the Monroe Public Schools next year, if you fill out this survey for us. We know we picked up 25 kids, so there's 25 kids spread throughout first to 12th grade, mostly in the elementaries and middle schools, mostly elementary. So some of those are captured in this number, okay? What else, the other thing is, we don't know, it's still early, we'll find out in February, what our kindergarten number is going to be. So right now, all we did was say that the kindergarten number is going to be the same, okay? I'm nervous. The survey showed, you know, that there was going to be like 130 kindergartners, I do not place, I do not place a lot of faith and confidence in that number. So we will be watching that very closely, where we are with kindergarten. And again, I just put these numbers underneath, just as a reminder, from last year, those were the increases we saw in each of those grades, and if that happens again this year, you know, we are showing that, you know, as of right now, we'd be at 3,192, but, boy, it wouldn't surprise me if we're not up closer to 3,300 at some point next year. The enrollment stuff really concerns me. So what are we asking for in this budget? Number one, we're asking for a, and when I say we're asking for, I do want to, you know, thank all of the principals and Darlene and Sheila for coming with their staffing requests. These don't represent all of the requests that were asked of me, there was other, there was plenty of other requests, but we're, again, we try to claw back as much as we can this year and still try to be somewhat fiscally responsible, knowing that it's going to be a challenging year. But where do we know that we need problems? We've already seen these things before. Our grade six in Jackie Hollow, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were somewhere, you know, I think it was 23 out of 35 sections of sixth grade above 25, at 25 or higher, I think 13 of those were at 27 or 28, if I'm not mistaken. You know, that's really high. If you go into Jackie Hollow, they're packed like sardines in there at 28. The next one, oh, sorry, the next one is a world language, and that would be a split position. So I showed the 1.0 reduction in world language last year, and then the, you know, in addition this year, being split between Massey and Jackie Hollow. Currently, we have three teachers spread across Jackie Hollow and Massey that are already teaching an additional Spanish class, so we're paying them an extra section to teach those three classes. On top of that, we have a new high school graduation requirements that have come into effect that say that every student needs to have a Spanish, have to have a world language course to graduate. So we've started a sequence of Spanish 1A and Spanish 1B, and we're going to need someone to pick those courses up next year. So we're looking at splitting a world language position between both Jackie Hollow and Massey to cover those courses. It also helps us out with scheduling at both schools, you know, the more you attach to single teachers, the more constraining the schedule is. The next is a, looking for a 1.0 special education at Massey. Again, this was a position that was reduced last year, we were able to, we've been able to piece it together this year with the move from alternative ed to Massey, because one of the teachers had special education certification and has worked between both Massey and special ed, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, between alternative and the special ed department and Massey. But it's getting a little bit more difficult with the increasing, you know, some increasing numbers at, in the alternative program, but more importantly, Darlene's talked about it already, the new state law goes into effect now that has students that can now receive special education services until they're 22 years old. So, you know, it used to be when students graduated, if they needed some sort of transition, some sort of transitioning program, they would go into a transition program right out of high school and then finish up when they were 21. Now, we need to program an extra year for students, so we're going to be picking up students that we're going to need to, and we want to be able to house that program here at Massey for those students, now that we're going to have them for an extra year. We have in, Font Hollow- We have, Font Hollow is the school, for some reason, that always has more students moving into it of the three elementary schools. The burden on special education is getting pretty significant there. We're asking for a 0.25. We had a person that was a 0.75 before. We're looking to make that a, a 1, a 1.0 position at Font Hollow, to be able to meet the needs of those students there, and provide them with some of the life skill programming that we're seeing at, at some of the other schools. The next one is a, a 0.25 ELL teacher, okay, English, English language learners. When we hired this person, I think four or five years ago, you know, their caseload has nearly doubled. They work across five schools right now, across every one of the schools in the district. They, they teach a class here at Massey, then a lot of the other work is individualized for students at each of the, at each of the other schools. And like I said, their course load has, has nearly doubled in the time that we've hired them. It's just, they travel from school to school, it's impossible right now for them to do that in what amounts to basically, you know, less than a four-day work week. So we're looking to just add a little bit of time there. This is a trend we're seeing around the, around the, the whole state. The number of English language learners that are coming into our schools is, is, is pretty The next one is three lunch para educators. This is less for supervision of the cafeteria, and more for professional development than anything else. When we cut paras this year, one of the things we did cut was a couple of our lunch para educators. In doing so, we removed the, the collaboration time that we gave to teachers, the common planning time to do their grade-level meetings during the day. So now, they're the ones providing the lunch coverage. This would give us an opportunity to address some of that professional development for them. The next one is a, it's a really small stipend position that we're looking to, looking to employ, and that is a teacher-in-charge program. So if we have a situation where a administrator is out for the day, or if they're tied up in a PPT, and there's something that, or some other meeting, and there's something that, you know, someone else could do, the elementary principals do not have assistant principals, we're looking at a really small nominal stipend for some of our teaching staff who may be pursuing their O92 in, in administration. It's a $1,500 stipend per person. And then the last one, you know, just to talk about, you know, I think it kind of highlights some of the, you know, a lot of the work that went into this was, you know, another position that was asked for at the, at the middle school was a science position. Right now, we have really high science numbers in, in both seventh and eighth grade, and we have teachers who are teaching an additional class there to pick, to pick that up. You know, this is where, you know, and this is what's special about this district, you know, I, I got everybody, we all got on a Zoom call, and we were talking, and, you know, how could we make this work without having to hire somebody else? One of the things we did here at the high school last year was, you know, because we were moving to the block schedule, we don't have labs, so our science teachers at Massey were able to pick up an additional section. So by doing that, we're able to free up a science teacher, instead of hiring another science teacher, we want to be able to transfer a science teacher from Massey, and have him go to Jackie Hollow to teach science down, to teach science down there, and deal with those course sizes. Just want to look at one more time, a little bit more closely at the elementary projections, just so you see where we are. This includes those kids that we picked up in that survey. If you look at Monroe Elementary, Monroe Elementary is, of the three elementary schools is in the best shape. It's also, has a chance to be the most volatile, because it's the smallest school. So while their class sizes are pretty good, you know, two, you know, two sections, you know, 22 and a half is fine, but it's only two sections, so, you know, four or five kids moving into, you know, that, that grade, you know, could move this number, you know, very, very quickly. But overall, we're feeling pretty comfortable with where we are at Monroe Elementary, where we're projecting right now. When you look at Font Hollow and Stepney, you, you notice our numbers are okay, but they are at the high end of okay. Again, we have a little bit more flexibility, because especially at Font Hollow, we have more sections, more, you know, more teachers, but these are the projected, you know, class sizes next year. And Stepney, kind of a similar story as, as Font Hollow, you know, really though, keeping a close eye on third and fourth grade next year with 23 and 24 kids. So, you know, a couple of cautionary tales. Again, the assumptions that we built in is that we're going to have some stability in class size. If we start getting these big jumps again, you know, we understand that this is the beginning of the process tonight. So obviously, the risks of the budget are all unanticipated risks, like they are every year. You know, enrollment is an unanticipated risk. We talked about special education being an unanticipated risk. Whenever you have a, you know, any kind of a boiler, or any kind of a major, you know, repair, that could really do damage to a district. And then the other one, like I said, we are, we are hoping to live in a, in a post-COVID world, but if there are some long-term costs associated with COVID, we may, you know, we'll be, we'll have to address those. I just wanted to make sure, because I think there were some questions. After tonight, Darlene is going to talk about special ed, and I'll give you guys a few minutes, obviously, to ask me some questions before Darlene does the, the first workshop in special education. I just wanted to point out, we're here Wednesday, Monday, and then next Wednesday, if we need to be, all at 6:30. Jack has sent out a, a Google Doc, and if you have, you know, obviously, you're going to have some questions tonight, as, as the, as it wears on, you might have questions after, after tonight. Feel free just to pop them right into the, that document, and then we'll do our best to keep updating those and get them back as, as quickly as we can, and just keep that a free-flowing, you know, form for us to, to work off of. The only other thing that's not included tonight is, you know, Dan Krosak just started as our, our building, building and ground person, you know, to replace Bill Girasco. One of the things that we are in the process of doing, and I don't think it's, I didn't think it was critical for tonight's operating expenditures, but one of the things we want to have for one of the first meetings in January is the, the capital plan, and looking at our five-year capital plan, and what are some of the needs. So I think Ron, Jack, myself, and Dan, we're going to visit the different principals, walk the schools, and find out, you know, what kind of needs are there. I know Paul always has some needs. I know one of the, one of the big needs this year is, is going to be laptops for teacher laptops, especially at the elementary level. I mean, we're relying very heavily on, on, on technology right now, and our, our teachers are, you know, in grades K1, 2, 3, are using laptops that are, you know, seven or eight years old. So that's going to be really important. So I'll stop there for now, before, before Darlene comes up.
All right. We'll just do some, like, I guess, high level, because obviously, we'll get into the detail, we'll get into more detail.
Yep.
I have a, I, I'll start. I have a question, because I too am very concerned regarding enrollment. Christine and I, you know, met with the elementary school principals on Friday to go over their budget, and I agree with you. I think we could be looking close to 3,300 students in an enrollment next year. Well, this leads right to, what is our capacity, and how far are we away from our capacity at our schools? Because we have one less school, when we had that 38, 3900, we had six schools operating, we have five schools operating. What's the capacity? I think Massey is probably more, the most flexible right now with capacity, but I'm really getting concerned, especially with Jackie Hollow, and now the elementary schools,
We had this marked, and I think we took it off. We were, Jack, what year was, did STEM, was STEM, was that?
STEM was 11/12.
Oh, it was 11/12?
Correct.
Okay, so this was the year that we, that we closed Jackie, that we closed Truckee. So, to give you an idea of where we were, to, for capacity purposes. You know, it seems like we're all right there. I think Massey is, I think you're right, I think Massey's fine. STEM is, is at capacity now, it can't get any better, it's any, any bigger. That's what it's, that's what it's going to be. I think there's some, you know, we've always talked about, you know, at one point, we were talking about moving STEM back to Jackie Hollow. You know, we know that we're not going to be able to do that, we've taken that off the shelf now, to not even talk about it anymore. So I think there is some room for growth at, at, at Jackie Hollow, and probably some room at the elementaries, but not a lot. The elementaries are starting to get tight, and I don't know if, Lee or Kelly or Bruce or anything, if, I'm sure you would agree. I'm sure there's some, you know, there would have to be some conversion of some rooms, and there would have to be some switching out. I'm thinking about the times I walk over there, and what some of the rooms would have to be repurposed.
Right, because that was going to be my next question. If we need to add sections at the elementary schools, do we have available classrooms to add those sections and for classes?
Kelly, Bruce, and Lee, I mean, what would be, I guess the question is, what would be the strategy if we had to add sections to your, to your buildings? What would be some of those things that would have to go? I, I know, like, off the top of my head, I think of the coordinators' room would probably be one of the first one. We still have the math and science materials in that room that would probably have to go.
And just like you said, repurposing the other rooms that are currently shared by a couple of adults for smaller groups of students.
Yep.
You would have to brand in somewhere else.
Yeah.
Same, I'm around, we have one, we have one space you could use, but it would require like four adults that don't have a home room.
Thanks, Bruce.
But that is a concern, go moving forward, depending on where our enrollment starts going, because if we start creeping up to that, close to 3,600, we may have a space issue.
Yep.
And that's not a next year problem, but that could be a problem two or three years down the road. And what do we do?
Yeah.
Question. Joe, in your meetings that you have with the, I don't know, the acronym, VCAPS, and then the Western Connecticut, are we, relative to our total population, the percent increase that we're seeing, are we in the ballpark?
The percentage of students, you mean?
Yeah, like plus 58, or plus 59 over our population as a percentage. So like, other districts in this region, are they seeing that as well?
I mean, I don't have the exact numbers from the other regions, but everybody's experiencing the same thing. Yeah, everybody, and especially in the, the Western Connecticut superintendent's group that they, they talk to, and the Southern Fairfield County's group. I don't know exactly what the, what their numbers are, but they've all, they've all, you know, talked about the same kind of exodus out of, like you call it, the exodus out of New York City up, up this way.
Yeah.
Joe, I think if you look further, I'd like to jump on what you said. If you go to Jackie Hollow, I mean, how many available rooms are there? How many extra rooms have you got?
I mean, probably about two right now.
Yes, I, I do hear you, Don, and I, to be honest, I've, I've lost some sleep over this, because I do know what you mean. It's not a next year issue, well, it might be. I, I won't say it's not. It could be a next year issue. But if the trend continues, wow, it's not going to be easy. And I know, Joe, I, I got you, you know, STEM's on the back, that we're going to keep it, I got all that. I'm just worried about square footage.
Yeah.
And being a tech ed teacher, I know we have so much square footage per student. You can't go more than that.
Yep.
And I'm sure classroom-wise, it's the same way, which is why we have class counts in our contract.
Yep.
So yeah, I'm, I'm also concerned about that, too.
Yeah.
Now, did you capture, I would imagine you did, which is what the survey was, capture and talk to those kids whose parents pulled them out this year for full remote or full homeschool, are they all coming back?
Well, it, it seemed like they are, because our number, ironically, I, I think I said earlier in the year, and I was surprised when Jack gave me the number, we had 25 parents homeschool their kids, and the number that Jack had was exactly 25, for, that were not kindergarten, that were, that were coming back, so. I, I assume a lot of those were the ones that pulled their kids out for the year.
Anybody else have any other questions, before Darlene comes up and does her presentation? Jack?
Joe, I just had a question regarding the Magna School settlement.
Yeah.
I know we just talked about it briefly.
Yeah.
But has there been any kind of, I know, with the settlement specifically, has there been any changes since the last time?
There, there have, there, well, I did talk to the attorney, and we've been playing phone tag now for, since before Thanksgiving, but he, he did call, and he spoke to Jack and I, and he said, listen, I, because if you saw, you know, the lawsuit, the towns just got named in the lawsuit. But, I mean, basically, what he said is, if you want to continue to pay me to do this, I'll fight it for you, and then you're probably going to have to pay, you know, this amount right here. So we're trying to work out some sort of a, some sort of a program to be able to pay, you know, to be able to pay them.
Joe, are we doing town fighting now?
No, it was, the, the original suit was Stratford, Cheltenham, Trumbull, and Monroe, and they've all, they've all settled.
So this is our actual settlement number?
Ron, is, that's the settlement number plus the tuition number, I think?
It is.
For, for, that's why I said tuition and settlement.
So wasn't the settlement like 150?
155, yeah.
And that's based on how many years?
It was three, and then, yeah, not this year, yeah.
And, and moving forward, I know, when you said we don't have very many kids utilizing this program, but is it, is that, you see that trend, that we're not going to have a ton of kids going back?
I don't, yeah, I mean, it seems like, you know, we've been, the last few years, it's been about 10, 10 kids or so. Al?
Joe, in terms of the budget history, previous 10-year average is 1.3.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how that compares to, like, Trumbull or Newtown?
I don't, Alan. Yeah, I could, I could try to find, I don't know if they'll have that, but I could, I could ask.
Anybody else have any questions right now, on just the executives on our island? I said, well, I'm sure a lot of questions will come up when we start in the detail, but just for this part. All right, then I guess we will have Darlene come up and do the special ed.
I'll do the best I can. I get a little, yeah, I can't see that far anyways.
All right, so section seven. Correct? Just so everybody's on the same page.
I'm not very good with this thing, so I may look through the slides too fast. First, Jen and I would like to, Tracy told me she can hear us. I pulled the microphone close. First, Jen and I would like to thank Alan for meeting with us to review the proposed budget. As a school psychologist, his understanding of the special education process and the student supports was very helpful to us. Thank you very much, Alan. Monroe services students from the age of three to 22 with a variety of disabilities. Currently, we have 449 students eligible for special education services, which is 13.7% of the district population. In 1920, in the 1920 school year, which was the last time it was reported on the state website, the state average was 16%. So, as you can see, we are under the state average. Each year, there are challenges when we are creating a budget, the most important being that, the fact that special education services and enrollment in special education can change on a daily basis, we've talked about that. The ever-changing needs of our students is compounded by COVID-19. We are, as we are required to deliver services outlined on each child's IEP, as Nick pointed out earlier, we have, we still have As Nick pointed out earlier, we have, we still have to continue to provide those services, and we are doing that to the best of our ability. The hybrid model, the temporary remote or the full remote models require special education teachers and related service providers to be creative when implementing the programs and progress monitoring these skills. We must ensure that the goals and objectives are being implemented, and I bring this to your attention because it may impact student programming moving forward. As part of the budget process, we typically use three-year averages. And as Joe had mentioned earlier, it's been, it was a difficult process this year because last year, many of our line items were reduced due to COVID. So we relied on some expenditures. We looked at the previous trends and the previous year's actuals and then trend data to calculate the proposed budget. Sorry. This is some trend data that I think you've seen, you saw this slide last year also. It's based, our budget is based on the current student population and possible increases to costs of student programming and basically transportation. As you can see here, let's see if I can get that, yes, there it is. As you can see here, our biggest influx is in the summer. So I think Nick had asked that question last month, where is it usually in the summertime when we get that big influx of students? It is. And if you look at the, this year, we have, we have 16 new students already registered. So if we look at some of the other lines, like 2016, 2017, we were at 15 students for the whole year total. 2018, 19, it was 18 students. So we're not sure how this year will play out, and as Joe said, enrollment is always a concern of ours, especially in special education, too. So we're not sure how it will play out, but it, you know, by these numbers, it looks like we may trend more toward the 17, 18 and then, or the 19, 20 school year. This slide illustrates the number of students moving in and out of district. And notice here that there is only one year, whoops, see, I did the wrong button. Notice here, there is only one year where we had students, more students moving out than moving in. That's, that's the typical process. The data that we have for this school year is unique because we have families who chose to homeschool students during the pandemic. We are planning for a return, a full return of these students if we come back to school full-time and in full in person. So, and then we must plan programs for them also. You also saw this slide last year. It affects referrals and eligibility. This affects our budget. It's the number of referrals that we receive each year. Although the budget is prepared in December, as the year goes on, we still continue to get referrals and we have to go through that budget process. As I mentioned last month, there are always, there is always an uptick in January for new referrals. That's after, usually after the second semester. This year, different on the graph, at the top on this bar graph, we included the students who are not made eligible, so during the school year. So when a referral is made from birth to three, or a school team, or a parent, we must go through with the whole process, the whole referral process. We have to go to PBT to determine if a student is eligible or not eligible. This graph also speaks to our SRBI process and how interventions are used to improve skills. For example, we may go to PBT on a student and provide data that proves that our interventions are working. The trend data shows that the student's making some progress and that the student doesn't require specialized instruction. If we look at the 18, 19 school year up here, I believe it's this one, right? There were 93 students referred, 37 were found not eligible, 39 were eligible in grades K through 12, and 17 were found eligible at the preschool level. As you can see, for the 19, 20 school year, it trended lower as students were working remotely in the spring. This school year, however, there have been 56 referrals already, which may be attributed to COVID-19 and being home. So as we get into the budget, one, our budget projections are based on a calculation of 3% increase for tuition, transportation and other special education services. Although there are 44 accounts in the special education budget, I am highlighting the main drivers of the budget, which are the same as those that I report on monthly. To begin, professional education services include outside agencies that provide behavioral and mental health services and other services in and out of this district. This line has a decrease of $1,204 due to the current changes in student programming. If you recall, funds were transferred into this account in the beginning of the school year. We were actually underfunded last year and this year. There is an increase in the number of students attending magnet schools so that require the district to pay for special education services. So if a student goes to a magnet school, chooses to go to a magnet school and has an IEP, the district needs to pay for those services. So there will be an increase of $20,000 in that line. I shared that we continue to see an increase in the number of mental health evaluations being conducted. It's this one, right? Therefore, we increased this account $20,000. And then, although if you look in your book, the three-year average for legal fees is a bit lower than our request, we also considered the last two years being above the three-year average. So in, in the book, you'll see that it was 40-something thousand dollars the first of those three years, but then the next two were $100,000. So we trended toward, trended toward that. Therefore, the request is for an increase of $20,000. The next line is an increase because some of the agencies provide school day programs and related services. The occupational and physical therapy line has an increase because we moved services to this line and removed them from tuition private. So we have some, some outside providers who both have a school, a school program, a school tuition, and they also provide related services. So we just, we just did it to kind of true up that line. Both tuition public and tuition private are a large percentage of our budget. There is a decrease in tuition public due to the changes in student programming. As I mentioned earlier this year, we brought students back to district and some have graduated from these programs. The calculations, again, are based on a 3% increase for the students we have currently enrolled in these programs. At this time, there are no students attending the REACH program. However, we thought it would be wise to leave funds for a place, a single placement. This is a budget decrease of approximately $304,000, mainly because we budgeted for 21 students last year and for 15 for the upcoming school year. Currently, we have 18 students placed in private settings. The increases in tuition private, in the tuition private account are due to the projected 3% increase in programming for two new students in the district. This leaves us with an increase of approximately $130,000. This is also the line to which excess cost will be applied. It will be only one line this year. Another big driver in any school budget is transportation. The preschool line is based on the 21, 22 rates and includes three midday runs. Due to an increase of students attending preschool, we now need an additional morning route to keep the travel time under one hour, which is a state mandate. Students can't be on the bus for longer than an hour. You'll notice that in the system wide, it'd be good if I can see that, that one. You will notice in the system wide line that has a significant reduction, and this is because of the changes in carriers. One of our vendors, we were using this school year's, is charging us much less than the vendor that we used last school year. Transportation summer shows an increase of 2,630% in your binder. The reason being because most schools provided remote learning for the summer of 2020. Therefore, we incurred minimal costs, but also, these funds were the funds that were transferred into the outside agencies because we did not utilize them during the summer. So that, so that gives you, if you look in your budget book, it shows that we only, our actual in 2021 was only $3,900. So what we did is, we took the 2019 actual, which was 100, about $100,000, and we increased it by 3% and then compounded it for the 2021, 21, 22 budget. If you look at the CES Aces line, we had to add an additional route because our former carrier could not accommodate us due to COVID-19 and a lack of drivers. So we got that phone call a few weeks before school started saying that they didn't have enough drivers to accommodate us. So we scrambled for transportation for our students, and we were able to get a carrier to take on one of our routes. And as students worked remotely in the spring, we did not utilize all of our bus aides. However, we are budgeting for a typical return to school with contract increases and additional aides. Special education transportation has an increase of $92,000. And again, you've seen this slide before. We talked a little bit about how excess cost is going to affect us, but before we do that, we just want to do a brief overview of it. This year, the per pupil expenditure, which is provided by the state in October, and that's, that actually is the per pupil expenditure of $17,907. It gets multiplied by 4.5 to get the threshold. So you could see that up here. I think that's about 80,000, 80,500 something dollars. Students who qualify must have a total cost that exceeds the threshold. In the middle of this slide, this is, this is a sample of a student. You could see this in this, in this example. If a student has a tuition cost of $83,152, also has transportation with an aide, requires special equipment or an evaluation, has a summer program and summer transportation, it would bring us to a cost of $151,000, 151,000, $158. This student would qualify for excess cost. But what you have to remember is that the threshold is then subtracted from the expenditures to bring us to $70,620. In the past, the state has paid out 70% of the difference, which would be $49,434 for this student. After the state reimbursement, if you look down here, after the state reimbursement, our total obligation to this student is still $101,724. A concern for budgeting, and we've talked about this at length last year, a concern for budgeting for excess cost has always been that we are never guaranteed these funds from the state. And then we added a slide on excess cost this year to try, just to give you an overview and a comparison of what was happening last year, this year and next year. The district always budgets for excess cost based on the prior year. So in 2019, '20, our excess cost reimbursement was estimated to be $781,000. That figure was applied to the 2021 budget in anticipation that the district would receive at least that amount. The problem is that the threshold this year was increased to over $80,000. So many students did not meet that threshold. When the December 1st excess cost was filed for this year, the estimated reimbursement is approximately $508,000. So already, you know, we had in the budget for this school year, the 2021 school year, the $781,000 was in budget, and, you know, as of right now, the estimate is $508,000. Last year, there were 21 students eligible for excess cost, and this year, there are only 17. Now, as Joe said, has said before, that's not a bad thing when you think about it because, remember, we only get 70% back of the difference between the student expenditures and the thresholds. So if students, you know, aren't, aren't making the excess cost, and we did have some students that we brought back into district from some of the outplacements who obviously didn't qualify this year. So now we have, you know, it's not a bad thing that, that we're not getting the excess, the same amount as the excess cost. However, the problem is, is that when the state continues to raise the per pupil expenditure each year, we will have fewer students who qualify. The difference in the excess cost this year has contributed to an overall increase in the special education budget of 7.39%. However, the actual total increase in the line items for special education is 1.31%.
Questions? Ron, I guess this is a question for you. How did you calculate, how did you go about the calculation for excess cost for this upcoming budget?
So it was actually calculated in the special ed department, and then I did a MERA calculation. And we basically calculated it with the current high-cost population.
And did you increase the per pupil?
No, we didn't, but we also didn't increase the, if we did that, we would have had to increase the expenditure side for inflation on there. So we just, you know, left it the same. I don't see any risk in, you know, I mean, the bigger risk is the change in population.
So I guess this would be to Donna. Is the plan, I guess, for this upcoming budget on the town side to budget a sped reserve?
No, because I think what, well, I think Ron and Joe can talk, or maybe Ron better. The Board of Finance set up last year a special ed reserve to pretty much backstop the board if, or if you had additional kids moving that were high cost. Now, I, I believe that we would just budget based on what we know.
What we have?
And what we have, and that they would continue to do that backstop as part of their budget. But Ron, do you know better?
Yeah, I don't know if you recall it, at the end of fiscal year '20, they put money aside for special, in a special ed fund, 500,000 and another 500,000.
Right, but now, but that money, that 500K for the sped is for the year we're in now?
It's, it could be for this year or next year.
Oh, so it can roll?
It could roll, yes.
Oh. Because usually the accounts don't roll over like that. Okay, so that's, so we're still budgeting to the student, and now we have that money that we gave back. That's in the reserve on the town side budget, it's not in here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I had a couple additional questions, but I, I worked off of section three in our budget books, which was the historical comparison. So that's where I took my sped questions from.
Okay.
So the historical comparison report, which is section three in our books, starting on page five of the Excel sheets in that section three. At the top, we have the object code for AIDS. And I was looking at these in particular, for the special education aids in the different schools. And I was looking at the FY '18 actuals for Monroe Wells, Stephanie, Juan Hollow, Jackie Hollows, STEM especially, and Masick. And if you carry that forward to today, there's some fluctuations, but there's this huge jump in STEM. And there's a jump in STEM in the special ed aids from our current budget to the budget that we're looking at right now. And I was wondering if, but in the backup, in section four, in the real nitty-gritty backup, I didn't see any adds, additions of AIDS at STEM. So I was just wondering if you could talk to that, really, some of the, the increases here in the special ed aids seem to be above what would be budgeted for normal salary increases. So I don't know if that's a people increase.
Well, I, I believe the answer to that question, and I'll definitely check on it to make sure. Well, I believe the answer to that question, and I'll definitely check on it to make sure I'm right, I believe the answer to that question is because we had moved a program to STEM, and so we did have to pick up a couple additional aids for that program. But those aids were already in at the Jockey Hollow School, and we moved them over to STEM. So I think that you should probably should see a decrease maybe in Jockey Hollow.
Well, the increase at Jockey Hollow, I could, you know, 1.41%, I could attribute that to contractual increases, but...
Yeah, I mean, if we're basing it on, if you're basing it on last year to this year, there have been no changes in STEM.
I guess, could I, for our next, or for our follow-up meeting, this whole aids?
I think I can answer the question. I think a budget transfer has to be done for 21. That's the, that's what we were discussing last week, Joe, with the Paris.
So this isn't an increase in a...
It's a 21 budget.
So it's not an increase in a person, it's a change in program?
Right, there's no, yeah.
Okay, all right. The students, the next page, the student assistance, is that in your department? I'm sorry, the speech assistance?
Speech assistance, well, we oversee the speech assistance, yes.
The Jockey Hollow, and again, Jockey Hollow and STEM, is that due to the switch in program as well there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's easy. The next one is on page 10. I saw a note in the backup, in our Section 4 backup about the transition counselor, that a grant ended, and now it's being added to the operating budget?
Yeah, I could talk a little bit about the IDEA grant also. You know, it does affect our budget. Each year, I forget, and I should have wrote down the number, but I have, most of the IDEA grant is staff members. So a percentage of their salary is in the IDEA grant. And what happens is, as the state gives us little money, and you know, and then salaries are going up, I can't continue to keep everything in the IDEA grant. So you know, something has to be moved out to make, so that we can make room for those salary increases.
And this position, is this for the, at the end of the academic journey, I guess, if you will, this is a person who?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, it's a transition person. Jim, what's the true?
It's actually school to career.
School to career is the liaison is the true title.
She works out in the district, but she works underneath the umbrella of our MASC occupational program.
So is she, is, this isn't the full salary, there's another?
It's a full salary, it's a non-certified position.
It's a non-certified.
Oh, 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 okay, got it, got it, got it, okay. Okay, so you're pushing stuff out to get, because you have, I got it. The next page, so page 11, the extra work line, the certified extra work line for sped, the fourth line down, this is actually a question about current year. So the actuals, and this was run 12/4, so I'm assuming that actuals are up to that date or at least until month, November month end. The actuals for that are 42, 294, and were budgeted at 43, 948. Is that a line, now, I compared this to the monthly that we got in our board pack, and this line isn't on there, is that a line to be concerned about, to watch for this year? Because I know that, you know, with COVID, a lot of these extra work lines, people are doing extra work.
Right, and the extra work line for special education is basically for when we have to have meetings outside of the school day, and teachers have to attend those. So that's what that line is used for. And I think what the budget is probably just a salary increase. I don't budget for these lines, these are all done through finance.
I just saw the actuals to budget for the current year is very close to being, it's almost there, and I didn't know if that was, we still have, you know, six, seven months to go, and I didn't know if that was a line to look out for, because it wasn't on the, it's not on the monthly.
You know, I'd have to check that for you, but Ron, that may be, is that where the summer school line is?
Which line is that?
This is the fourth line down from the top of the page, 75131, extra work, certified, I mean, it's in, it's, I'm not saying it's over compared to years past, I'm just saying in the current year, it's almost to budget.
But now that you say that, I don't think this is on, now that you say that, I think that that might be where we took the summer school.
Okay.
Out of, because that looks like the cost for summer school, right, Jim? Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to put that on a question and answer?
Yeah, and I can get you a definite answer.
Yeah, I'll do it. Okay, I'm done.
Do other people have questions? Alan, did you want to share anything or have any questions that, based on your meeting?
No, maybe Darlene, you might want to maybe talk a little bit more about the MASC position.
The MASC position?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in planning for the MASC position, it was requested, it was actually requested by the principal also, but Joe talks a little bit about that we need, we have the students that we are going to have until they're 22 years old. And transition programs usually run two years, so that we, if we send students too early, then they go for two years, and then we have to bring them back to district, which is not ideal. So instead, we're trying to plan our own community program where they can, you know, they can spend a year or two here before, if they need to go on to a transition program. And you know, by doing that, we're going to be able to build a program, but we do need the staff to do that. And plus, we also had, in addition to that, we also had the shared, we have the shared position between MASC High School and the alternative school, and if we could send that teacher back to the alternative school, which is growing, but it's working out really well here. The clientele of that program has changed over the years, and we are able to have a successful program for many of our students right here in the building. So that would help, that would help with that program too.
We actually could use it this year.
Yes, we could. We could, yes. We're making it work, but it's not easy.
Anybody else have stuff on?
I just have one more, I'm sorry. I don't know if this would be under you or not, but the social worker, nope, okay, I'll do that for next time.
Darlene, what about, you've seen an increase in students requiring social-emotional support, given the times we're in?
Yes, yes, and I think that our guidance counselors, you know, have been handling that also. Our staff, many of our staff have signed up for that Yale opportunity to go through that program at Yale. So you know, they're getting a lot from that also, and they're, you know, everyone, I have to say, the entire staff in every single building has, you know, put an emphasis on the social-emotional learning of our students. And again, Alan, we don't, we talked about this a little bit, we don't know how this is going to end up post-COVID, you know, what needs are going to have to be met with students, but you know, I think we're in a good place right now trying to, on a daily basis, you know, connect with students and parents. Just to add to Nick's question earlier, I was thinking about it when I was sitting there, that, you know, he asked about the special education parents and dealing with the COVID, and some of the feedback that we did get from parents was that they found it very helpful during the remote sessions, especially at the younger levels, preschool, kindergarten, first grade, where they were there and they could see how the teachers, you know, are instructing their children, and it also helped, there was a lot of communication during that time. So it also helped with the communication and the understanding of what goes on at school, what could be done at home, and what, you know, what necessarily has to be done at school. So it was very, you know, we've got some very positive feedback for that too.
Just so I know, is the Yale course is free?
Yes, yeah. It's free, yeah. That's why everybody signed up for it, yeah.
For you is good. Anybody else have stuff for Darlene? Alan, anything you want to advocate for?
Yeah, I mean, the MASC position, I think, is huge, that's something you'd really need. And I think Darlene hit all the major areas. And I think it's great that they're also bringing kids back, some kids with more significant needs are being brought into the schools to be, to work with, for the special ed teachers to work with them. I think that's huge.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Then I think we're good with our budget this evening. As Joe presented, we will have our next session. And just as a reminder, we're not voting on our budget until, what is it, January 19?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, you know, so we have many sessions still to go through to revisit certain areas and stuff, so on the Wednesday night, the 9th, we're going to be covering Jockey Hollow, MASC, and athletics. I think the next item on the agenda, as I wake up my computer here, was the second review of the curriculum that Jim Stolzel presented last time. If everybody remembers these approvals of the AP Bio and the AP Chemistry, we're approving now, but this would be built into this budget, and this would take effect for next school year. So do I have a motion to approve the resources requested for AP Bio and AP Chemistry as presented? Thank you, Nick, second Jerry. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, thank you, motion passes. New business, we have four policies up for first review. They are Policies 4118.231, and then Slash 4218.231, which is alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. 3281, school fundraisers. 3313, relations with vendors. And 3293.1, authorization of signature. Jack, do you want to talk about these? I don't know if George is still on, but he says he's on, but he can't really hear very well.
Not a problem.
Okay, Jack is going to cover it, George, we did hear you say that.
So the policy committee met on November 16th. The following policies were reviewed, as has already been mentioned. The Policy 4118.231, 4218.231, alcohol, drugs, and tobacco. This policy addresses the board's responsibility to maintain a workforce that's free from the effects of illegal drugs. Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAE, recommended the addition of a policy statement within this policy prohibiting the possession or use of CBD oil without a prescription. So we've revised the policy to include that statement. Policy 3281, school fundraiser, school fundraisers. This policy sets guidelines for the control of fundraising activities involving students within the school district. It provides guidelines for fundraising activities and requires that all fundraising activities are approved by the principal of the school at which they're being sponsored. The committee reviewed the Board of Education policy as it stands and deemed it appropriate. There are no revisions required to the policy. Policy 3313, relations with vendors. This policy sets guidelines to maintain good working relationships with vendors that supply materials and services to the school system. The revisions address the need for the Board of Education and all employees to avoid any conflict or appearance of conflict, personal or otherwise, when doing business with a vendor. The revisions also address our nondiscrimination policy as it relates to selecting a vendor and/or the practices of the vendor. And then Policy 3293.1, authorizing of signature. This policy acknowledges the Board of Education giving authority to the Superintendent and Director of Finance to execute and sign documents in the normal course of the school year on behalf of the Board of Education. This would not include agreements which require specific Board of Education approval. The committee reviewed this policy and determined that no revisions were required.
Does anybody have questions regarding those? All right, so these are up for first review, they will be on our next agenda for a second review and a vote. Does anybody have anything else before we move to adjournment for this evening? All right, so we, hearing none, we do have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jerry, second Christine, all in favor? All right, we will see everybody here on Wednesday night.